Good evening. It is six o'clock on September 11th. And this is our regularly called, regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting. I appreciate you all being here. I call this meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing none, the meeting is called to order. If I'd like everyone to stand for a moment of silence to commemorate the loss of live on September 11th. Councilwoman Harris, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Harris, can you read a proclamation about September 11th, please?
Today, we remember all the heroes who were forged in the hours, days, and years that followed that terrible morning of September 11th, 2001. Ordinary Americans who amidst the terror, smoke, and flames demonstrated extraordinary courage and selflessness. Together, their bravery helped prove to our nation and the world that what those terrorists most hoped to wound could never be broken, the character of our nation. In the crucible that was September 11th, we saw just how deep that character goes. We saw it in the civilian service members and first responders who left into action that day, running into the searing flames and crumbling buildings, risking and losing their own lives to save others. We saw it in the incredible courage and resolve of the passengers onboard Flight 93 who refused to let their plane be used as a weapon against more innocent Americans. We saw it in the police officers and firefighters who returned to the twisted steel and broken concrete slabs of Ground Zero and the Pentagon for months, breathing in toxins and ash that would damage their own health, but nonetheless refusing to stop searching through the destruction. And we saw it in the millions of Americans across our country who responded to the September 11th attacks by signing up to defend our constitution and join the greatest fighting force in the history of the world. In the years since September 11th, hundreds of thousands of American troops have served and sacrificed around the world to deny terrorists safe haven and protect the American people. We hold in our hearts all those whose loved ones gave their last full measure of devotion in this fight. We owe them and all our veterans and Gold Star families, as well as their survivors, caregivers, and loved ones, a debt of gratitude. While we can never fully repay that debt, we will never fail to meet our sacred obligation to prepare and equip all those who we send into harm's way and care for them and their families when they return. In honor of all the lives we lost 22 years ago, and in honor of all the heroes who have given their whole souls to the cause of this nation every moment since, may today not only be observed with solemn remembrance, but also with renewal and resolve. Together, may we continue to demonstrate that the rights and freedoms that those terrorists sought to destroy on September 11th, 2001 remain unwavering, strengthened by generations of Americans who dared all and risked all to defend, protect, and preserve our democracy. By joint resolution approved December 18th, 2001, Public Law 107-89, the Congress has designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. And by Public Law 111-13 approved April 21st, 2009, the Congress has requested the observance of September 11th as an annually recognized national day of service and remembrance. Now, therefore, I, Joseph R. Biden Jr., President of the United States of America, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2023, as Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance.
Thank you. Public comments? We have a public comment section at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. Gerald McCarley? Approach the microphone. Make sure the green light is on, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
All right, thank you. Saw an article in the choir recently with most of you smiling over your new road on Winter's Chapel. It made me sick. You indicated it costs 1.6 million, but the rumor is that it just, that was just the initial contract. I pass there a couple of times a week, and I have not seen anybody walking or riding on that path. In any event, that is the biggest waste of money since Mike Davis rebuilt the road to nowhere in Dunwoody. In about one-third of a mile, you managed to destroy the houses on the west side of the road, and you indicated you were going to extend the road to Peeler. When you do that, you're going to take out at least four or five hardwood trees that are probably over 100 years old. And you also may have to move bodies in the cemetery. A further waste of money. This is a crime. It's not a crime. It's dumbness. However, the laws of the state of Georgia do not have bad judgment as a crime. We need to stop these paths. First, we do not need 12-foot paths in Dunwoody. You are building them for 1% of the population, bicycle riders. You do not put 12-foot paths in established neighborhoods. Quit cutting our trees. When you cut down a 100-year-old tree and you put it back with a new tree, that is not one for one, ladies and gentlemen. The Green Belt is pretty in Dunwoody. We have a wonderful neighborhood. I will vote no on the bonds. Further, please don't destroy the Green Belt up at the old Austin Elementary School. That is a pretty space that I've seen lately up there, and don't come in there with a bunch of cement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lee? Come on up. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'll come to say that you guys are doing a great job, so I want to thank you for that. I came a while back ago and talked to you about finances, and that's what I'm going to talk to you about today. Kind of reviewing our finances and what we have for Dunwoody, especially as we're coming for these, I guess, these bond hearings. I think there's definitely an area of opportunity. I talked a long time ago about like CDs. I see we have, I think, two CDs with JP Morgan at roughly 4%. The current one-year Treasury Bill is still at 5.5%. The six-month is like 5.5, actually, the one-year is like 5.3. CD rates at other banks on the one-year side are 5.35%. More importantly, liquid money market funds are still north of 5%. Vanguard, Fidelity, even JP Morgan, they all have their equivalents of these money market funds, and all these funds pay north of 5%. Granted, there's definitely going to be a lot of money that is going to have to be in our checking and operational, but for our reserve funds, I would strongly recommend we consult with, like I said, a Fidelity or a Vanguard and see what type of money we could put into that so we can yield a little bit of better interest or talk, or even possibly look at Treasury Direct, which is the US government's direct website, and see if there's someone who could buy US Treasury Bills. Again, those are supposedly zero risk Treasury obligations. And that's, by the way, probably what JP Morgan are doing. You give them $10 million. They give us $4 million. They probably turned around, bought a Treasury Bill at 5.5, yielded the rest. We could probably do that, like I said, using a Fidelity or a Vanguard broker of some sort. I'd like us to consider that. That's a short-term and a midterm option. We don't have a long-term investment strategy. With interest rates going up, I would like us, again, we can consult like a Vanguard or Schwab or something like that and look at what might be a better solution for some of the excess reserves. And then my last comment is, as someone who walks around in the city and has an electric bike and has an electric scooter, I would definitely appreciate roads being redone and more pathways for that. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the cards I have for tonight.
Approaching. Do you have one more, please?
Can you hand it to somebody that works at the city, please, and they'll get it to me? Thank you. You'll have three minutes. Please introduce yourself, and you can start now.
Thank you. My name is Michael Sard. I'm an attorney at Sard Life Attorneys. I'm here representing Edens to talk about item number nine on your agenda, which is to add to the entertainment district, the Park Place property. So we really appreciate this opportunity. We're really very excited about it. Here with Nicole Scheiman, with Becca Allen and Josh Chambers, all from Edens, and various roles when you get to, you're part of the agenda. We're happy to answer questions for you. But we're really very excited for this opportunity as our client reimagines Park Place, brings in new tenants. This is, we think, just a great opportunity at the front door of the city with a lot of interconnectivity between properties. We just look forward to your support and the opportunity to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. All right. So now I think that concludes public comment, and we'll have another session of public comment at the end of the meeting. Before we get on with the meeting, Council, I'd like a moment, a privilege to take 30 seconds to just make a statement about some of the activity that happened in Dunwoody at the end of last week. So lots of Dunwoody residents are suddenly concerned about dinosaurs, particularly those that inflate. I'm thrilled to see this level of community engagement and want to assure everyone that we are working on a solution. Issues like this are complex, and we need some time to get it right and avoid unattended consequences. We will update you as soon as we can. And next, Mr. Litten, we are ready for your report.
Thank you, Mayor. The city manager's report, I'm gonna start with the Parks Department. We have the final Groovin' on the Green, October the 14th, coming up. Also, the trunk-or-treat is another event that's coming up in October 26th. The Veterans Day Ceremony is on the November 11th, and the Holiday Lights opening night will be on December the 1st. So that's what's coming up in that department. Also, the Two Bridges Park, the drive lane asphalt and additional sidewalk and reconfiguration of the entrance island. That was quoted, and we're hoping to start that in the next week or so to have that entrance way repaved going into the park. The Leaf Parks and Rec Guide for Fall and the Winter of '23 is complete. That's out at this point. Also, we have the, tomorrow, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Groundbreaking is scheduled, and that will be, I believe that's at 4:00 tomorrow. So that'll be a nice event. Public Works, we have the public comment period for the sidewalk concept design on Perimeter Center East and Peeler Road, Equestrian Way. We also have the Stormwater Pipe Rehabilitation and Trow Bridge Drive, Devonshire Way, Heatherdale Court, Lakeside Drive, and Winter Creek Court, ongoing, are upcoming this month through November. The resurfacing program for 2023 is complete. A total of 15 lane miles were paved on 33 streets. The Georgetown Gateway, the Right Turn Lane onto 285, and Left onto Cotillion have been reopened after we completed some stormwater work in that area. The Ashford Dunwoody Phase 1 construction is expected to begin later in the month for our first phase of the path. As y'all know, that was a lot of work to get that right of way donated to the city in exchange for that. So that is, we're looking forward to that project. Part of that project's already complete, well, has been completed with the development, a new development over there. So that's kind of a taste of what's coming from there all the way down towards Hammond. The city completed its quick build project on Vanderland Drive. There's a picture of that within your report that extends the sidewalk from the elementary school to the end of the road. And we also completed 25 stormwater roadway and signal work orders in the past month. Okay, community development, the work at Campus 244 continues. The new offices in the framing stage. Finishes are going on to two buildings, 1A and 1C at High Street. And we continue to accept applications for the grant program for the 2023 Front Yard Tree Program. The Department held a Safe Street Workshop at Corners Church in Spanish with about 25 people in attendance. So we consider that to be a successful turnout there. Economic Development, working with the Dunwoody Arts Commission to select public art for the Georgetown Gateway Project. Also, the mosaic at Womack is underway with a spring 2024 completion. We have also, the department is working with Life South to install a mural on the retaining wall along Ashford Center Parkway. So that's also ongoing. Upcoming, we have the Nobody Digest, which will be coming to our mailboxes in late September and early October. That publication's always very popular amongst the citizens. We have another highlight was the Winter's Chapel Trail Ribbon Cutting. We also have the Mosaic Project Page. That's up on the website. There's also a little description of that within the report. The staff met with DHS sponsor for the Student Leaders for the Youth City Council, the plan for the new school year. Press releases is something that we constantly put out, as well as my newsletter, Inside Dunwoody, and other videos. You could go back and mark the experiences that the council has had on the ribbon cuttings and various other openings. We do have the, let's see, our National Night Out has been scheduled for September the 14th at Brook Run Park. That was rescheduled because of weather. CNBC and BSC is scheduled for October 26th at Brook Run Park. And also, we have the, on November the 16th, at City Hall, the Police Department will be doing the civilian response to the active shooter events training during that time. I do encourage people to attend that, and there'll be more on that as we get closer to the event. On distracted driving, we continue to work on that as part of our safety campaign. There were a total of 23 citations issued along Shenway-Dunwoody Road, including 10 for hands-free violations during that time. As you read through the workloads that we have for the Police Department, you'll see, you know, how busy the department has been and the, and also how we use the LPRs, which is the license plate readers, to assist with these various crimes that occurred in the city. There's also a note in here with AMR. We had to use our neighbors next door, the AMR ambulance from Sandy Springs. Chief's prepared to talk about that a little bit more in a moment. And then we also have, under Finance, today, we did have our budget committee meeting. We have today and one tomorrow. And we'll complete that process. As y'all know, the budget process is something that starts back in July, June, July of the year with our departments, that is reviewed by staff, then it goes to the Budget Committee, and then later it will come to the full council. It's also something that the mayor and I spend a lot of time on to put together, to present to the Budget Committee. So that's occurring as we speak. The monthly finance report for July 2023 is within this report here. There's a link there you can go to, to take a look at that report. And Richard is here, of course, to answer any questions you may have on that. We did receive a Germa Safety Grant for $20,000 to be used on safety-related items. And then the last thing I want to mention is under Municipal Court, we did have that department, once again, it's kind of a quiet operation in terms of the way I see it. We don't all, you know, on a daily basis, have to deal with the court system, but it is very efficient. And they disposed of over 735 cases last month and only had a reset 31 cases. But they do an excellent job right here where we're sitting several days a week to get through our court issues. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those.
Okay, questions? Anybody? Stacy?
Is Michael Smith tucked back there?
He is.
Okay. I just had a question on the paving. It was completed, but a lot of times we're able to do more than what was more than our list. Were we able to do that this year, or did we do just our list?
We did. There were at least two streets that were listed as optional or when we published the list last year, and we were able to do those this year.
Okay. And then I want to say thank you for that quick build. And then my next quick question is, and the mosaic on the Womack retaining wall, is it hiding the work, or are we going to get unveiled? Because thank you for putting that up so people kind of know what was going there.
Yes, that was actually Todd Meadows' idea, and Jennifer helped with that, and it's not hiding the work there. I think they're fabricating all that off-site, and then they'll come in and put it in. So it's just there to tell.
A placemaker, yeah, so that they know that we didn't actually just not put something in that space, too.
Yeah.
Thank you. And then
Joe?
Eric, whether it's under chief or not, the hands-free violations, you guys are going to get them all the time. You could just sit there. You got 10 of them in the one detail there. Do we see anything like, is there a transition? When we mandated decades ago, people had to wear seat belts, and it took a long time, I'm not knowing how the history went, to change people's behaviors. Do we see that ever? I mean, it seems like it's just plateauing and peaking. It doesn't reduce. I can stand out on a road every day and see people with their texting and driving distracted and waiting along. I just don't know if we see that changing in driver behavior since Georgia put out that law. Do we see anything like that? Part A, and then part B is, we're doing the enforcement side. Is there, at the local level, any value of doing any kind of, trying to do any kind of education or outreach?
So what we initially found was there was a lot more compliance right after the law went into effect. And over time, particularly with COVID and after COVID, there seems to be less compliance. And, you know, so I don't know what that means for the future, whether people will comply more. But I think the, one of the things is, I don't think the citation is probably painful enough. And so people are kind of, you know, willing to take a risk, so to speak. And if it was more painful, then they probably wouldn't.
And then while you're up here, can you address the AMR issue?
Yes, we're, well, we're still waiting on the contract back from DeKalb County. As soon as I get it, I'll send it to our city attorney so he can review it and then get it to the council. In this particular case, we had a delay in, I think it was an overdose, and delay in DeKalb being able to respond. It was going to be an excessive response time. We contacted Sandy Springs AMR. They got there within five minutes.
So I have a presentation from the Ambulance Association of Georgia that I'll scan in and share about their perspective on what the issues are and what the solutions are. I think we were fortunate that Sandy Springs had an ambulance available because they don't always either. And there's a lot of operational challenges, I think nationally, labor, wait time at hospitals and all that. So I have a question about Narcan. So in some cases, it said y'all had to give two doses.
Sure.
Do our officers always have two doses in their cars?
Yeah, so each officer has one packet, but it has two doses in it. And then, of course, usually they're not. There's more than one officer on scene.
Right.
In the past, I can recall, we have given up to five doses of Narcan.
Wow, okay. And then the percentage of, even with the driving distracted, is it still, is it a majority of people that are not local, or is it just? I mean, not to say Dunwoody people certainly text and drive. I'm not saying that.
Sure. I haven't looked at that statistic specifically, but typically about 80% of the people we issue citations to or arrests come from outside the city of Dunwoody. And it probably holds true for that violation as well.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all for what you do on a daily basis. We appreciate it today and every day. Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Eric. Whenever you're ready for the first public hearing.
So the first hearing is going to be a review and consideration of a text amendment to regulate drive-through facilities. This is a first read, and the ordinance reads as follows. As follows, in ordinance to amend Chapter 27, the zoning ordinance of the City of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances to amend regulations for drive-through facilities, and I will be presenting.
Madeline's going to go down for the presentation. If it's okay with council, she'll come up to answer questions when we get to that point. Right?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So this evening, we are discussing drive-through facilities in Dunwoody. So we do currently have drive-through regulations in our various types of zoning districts. So we have our older non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts. So those are the classic zoning districts like C1, OI, OCR. And those zoning districts are not restrictive necessarily about drive-throughs. They are not separately defined at all, and they are not classified or regulated as separate uses. And so they're considered allowed by right by default for a lot of different uses, like restaurants and banks. However, within our perimeter center in Dunwoody Village zoning districts, which are our newer zoning districts, where we've taken the time to come up with regulations that aim for more walkable centers, more pedestrian-friendly environments. Those do classify and regulate drive-throughs as a separate use, and they are a little bit more controlled. And so overall, we do have design standards for drive-throughs, but we want to bring up the zoning regulations in our non-residential and mixed-use zoning districts up to the standards of the perimeter center in Dunwoody Village zoning districts, because we do have goals for walkability and pedestrian-friendly environments in all of Dunwoody. So why regulate drive-throughs? So typically, drive-throughs are really not conducive to pedestrian-friendly environments. Drivers are less likely to be alert in drive-throughs, and there's a lot of potential for conflict between drivers and pedestrians, especially when people are driving across the curb cuts and people are trying to walk across on the sidewalk. Drive-through lines also really interrupt traffic flow. There are a lot of areas where drive-throughs will spill out onto the street and cause really, you know, bad traffic jams. Additionally, the idling cars negatively impact air quality, and the typical design of drive-throughs involves a lot of excessive asphalt. And it's not necessarily a sustainable mode of development. So overall, we are looking to classify and regulate drive-throughs as a separate use. So this way, it's not going to affect the underlying uses, like restaurants or banks. All of that is staying the same. We're just separating out drive-throughs from those underlying uses and requiring all new drive-throughs to obtain a special land use permit. And the special land use permit will allow a greater amount of consideration when we're looking at whether or not to allow drive-throughs in certain areas. And it also gives us the ability to mitigate those negative impacts that we just discussed. And we are also adding a definition for drive-through facilities. So overall, these are just snapshots from the proposed use table, as you can see in the traditional zoning districts. Like I said, the OI, the OCR, the C1 districts, those would all require special land use permits. The allowed, the drive-through facilities are within the perimeter center in the Dunwoody Village zoning district. Those remain the same. I've just reorganized the tables in those sections just for clarity. But in the PC districts, it still requires a SLUP in PC 1, 2, and 3, and they're not allowed in PC 4. And then Dunwoody Village, just as we did before, we don't allow drive-through facilities at all, our new drive-through facilities. So overall, again, like I said, the special land use permit process allows the plans to be reviewed in greater detail for design, traffic impact, pedestrian accommodations, and access management. And those are all things that will help ensure that if we do allow a drive-through in a certain area, that it is going to be something safe and something attractive and something designed well for the area. At the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission did recommend unanimous approval of the text amendment for drive-through regulations with one amendment, essentially adding a line to the definition. So it now reads as a facility at which the customer is served while sitting in a vehicle typically associated with, but not limited to, drive-through restaurants, banks, pharmacies, and drive through restaurants, banks, pharmacies and dry cleaners. And the uh, recommendation from the planning commission has been incorporated into the ordinance that's before you this evening. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Unless there's an objection, I will open the public hearing for this item. We will have ten minutes uh, for people to speak for in support of this uh, change. And ten minutes who are opposed, if there are ten minutes, if anyone would like to speak for, go ahead and stand up in the middle. You can approach the microphone. Okay, seeing none, is there anyone here to speak against this change? Seeing none, uh, with this, I close the public hearing unless there's an objection and um. And we will have uh, time to ask questions of staff. So um, go ahead. Rob, sorry.
I've got a couple of questions. First is just, you mentioned um, that perimeter and village are already covered by um, regulation of parking facilities. What percent of our commercial districts are not currently covered by some sort of regulation of parking facilities? Approximately, it doesn't need to be just a third.
Um. So I mean, the perimeter center and Dunwoody Village do make up a significant portion of the like cities' commercial areas, but the two commercial areas that aren't covered uh, would be the Georgetown area. Um, and that we do have a master plan for the Georgetown area, which does really emphasize walkability. And we're also doing a new like sidewalk project there, obviously, um, on Shambly Dunwoody Road. So that's a really large commercial area where there aren't any additional restrictions on drive throughs. And then additionally, the commercial area up by uh, Jet Ferry and Mount Vernon Road. So I would say those are a little bit less than half of Dunwoody.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the other question, I guess, relates to the definition. Um, where you talk about a facility where a customer is served sitting in a vehicle. So if somebody opens up, is it Sonic where you pull up and order in a parking spot and leave? Would that be considered a drive through facility?
I would say so because they're receiving service in their car, but something like where you drive and park and get out of the car and go and like order. Um, that would, I would say not, if you do like curbside.
And again, I'm just trying to get some clarification on this. So if I have like, um, I think Chick-fil-A, for example, you can order on their app and they'll bring it to your car and your parking, you know, in a parking spot. So would that also be the same thing? If if I can call my dry cleaner or my pharmacist and say, hey, I've pulled up into the pickup spot. Can somebody come out and drop me off my stuff? That would be considered a drive through facility? And the reason I ask is because I. I know what the intent of this is and there's going to be a gray area and I just want to make sure at least aware of that.
Yes, so um. We can clarify the definition further, um, if allowing like the curbside services, something that you all are open to.
I I just want so someone who's thinking about building a business to know, hey, I can't have a drive through unless I go through this extra step. But you know, maybe I'll just designate a half a dozen spots that people can play. So it's just.
Not the same thing.
Clarification when during the implementation, so we don't get a question down the road. So I. Anyway, that that was just my thought.
Right. It sounds like we need clarification on that. Anybody else? John?
Thank you, Madeline, for the presentation. Yes, slops are fine. If you want to drive through, come to us, we'll talk. Um, that being said, is there any applications in the pipeline now? What about those facilities and businesses that are currently uh, have historically had drive throughs, which may be looking for a new uh, a restaurateur that's looking for a new vendor to fill their spot? What is the uh, situation of those businesses currently if we were to pass those? What's the grandfathering? Is there grandfathering? How does that work? Does the slop tied to the land or to the owner? Clarify for me how that would work.
Yeah, so to my knowledge, and I do uh, all the commercial permit review. Um, recently I have not had an application for a new drive through except for the redevelopment of the Burger King in the Georgetown area across from the street from Kroger. Um, so that's the only one currently in the pipeline. Um, and as far as existing drive throughs, uh, if this were to be passed, um, existing drive throughs in the C one and the O I or the OCR zoning districts, any of those mixed use, non-residential zoning districts. Um, those would be now considered legal, non-conforming, and they would be subject to the legal, non-conforming standards. So essentially, if it's abandoned by our definition, they would not be able to reinstate it. Uh, but if they uh, switch owners or reopen the business within the grace period that the code allows, they would be allowed to continue with the drive through.
All right. So a business that's been closed for a number of years that had historically had a drive through, they wouldn't need, it wouldn't automatically be relocated unless they came back for a slope. Because it would be.
Correct. They would have, if they wanted to reopen it, they would have to get a special land use permit, correct?
All right. Thank you very much.
Joe.
Um, Ellen, thank you very much. Um, I really appreciate having this up, uh, having this conversation just to standardize. Again, we're not prohibiting drive throughs, but we're just elevating, keeping the same standard now that we've had in the village, a little bit here, a little bit there. So hey, that's great. I think we can tweak the definition. I did a quick Google. And so I think we can tweak the definition legally is right. It's uh, so through an attendant or a window or automated machine, you know, so I think we can again, clean up the enhance on the on the definition. And Dr. John was talking about this whole idea of this grandfathered and stuff. We also have this NS zone, right? Neighborhood shopping. And I know, you know, from firsthand where the Chick-fil-A is on Mount Vernon there, I mean, Jeff Ferry, right? So I'm getting both sides confused. Which one is N N? I think it's both NS. I think it's on both sides.
Yes, those are both, that's all NS.
They're both NS on both sides. Okay, so then, yeah, and I remember there was an Arby's there. And this was the story where, yeah, it wasn't abandoned. There was a time grace period and then they kind of, yeah, made sure there was still uh, use there between the grace period that it was grandfathered in. So, okay, but I I get the idea that the grandfather in exists still and then we do have some type of grace period. So like six months or something. I forgot what it is, the number, but.
Six months.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you.
And go ahead, Catherine.
We did have an email from a citizen who was concerned about excessive regulation on business. So can you outline exactly what this would cost a business? One slop and then two time wise, what it adds to the process?
So the slop process, the timeline is approximately six months. Our rezonings on our special land use permits, the timeline is significantly extended recently. If you recall, there were changes to state law in terms of public notice, so it is a bit of a longer process now for special land use permits. And in terms of the costs, um, the standard review fee um, is around, I believe at that, I don't have the permit fee sheet in front of me. Uh, but I believe it's around a thousand dollars and we also do have advertising fees, uh, which amount to approximately, um. Gosh, we just read, uh, I I believe around eight hundred dollars. So I think overall, resoning, special land use permits, those are all running in around the range of two thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So I presume the Burger King, because it's already in fact that this doesn't impact them. Okay. Um, any other questions or comments? Um, and you said PC four, I think, that they would not be allowed. Is that what you said?
Correct. They're not allowed in PC four.
But does that mean they're allowed in PC one, two, three by slop?
By slop, yes.
Is that a change? Because you know, so that's.
That remains the same. All I did for the perimeter center districts and the Dunwoody Village districts, I didn't change where they were allowed or not allowed. I just reorganized the table.
That's fine. Anybody else? I to agree that we've got, we have lot, like Target has like eighteen spots for pickup, so we have to figure that out. Um, because I use it all the time, um, just selfishly. Um, okay, we'll see this again in four weeks, I think, or two weeks, four weeks. I don't know. Okay, we'll see it soon. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is a first read um, for the review and consideration of a text amendment for uh, our stream buffer regulations. The ordinance reads as follow, in ordinance to amend chapter sixteen land development regulations of the city of Dunwoody Code of Ordinances to update the list of exempt activities in the stream buffers in accordance with state law. Allegora Denoyers presenting.
Thank you. Can everyone see it on the screen? Okay, perfect. Good evening, everyone. So our current stream buffer regulations are as follows. We have a twenty-five foot state buffer that's regulated um, by the state and fences are currently exempt from that buffer. We additionally have a seventy-five foot stream buffer that includes the twenty-five foot state buffer that's enforced by the city along all streams. Um, and currently fences in the seventy-five foot stream buffer require a variance. The city also maintains regulations for floodways and flood plains as established by FEMA. Um, we allow essentially no construction within the floodway and only limited development within the flood plain. Um, the floodway is typically where there's more sort of moving water, high velocity, high volume. While as the flood plain, there tends to be more standing water. So that's the difference between those two things. Um, and currently fences are not specifically addressed for floodways and flood plains. Um, certain activities that have a minimal impact on the stream buffer are exempt from the seventy-five foot stream buffer. That includes maintenance work and minor land disturbing activities that are done with hand tools. So since twenty twenty, the zoning board of appeals has approved all eight of the variance cases involving fences and stream buffers. They pretty much get waved through every time. The variance process adds approximately three months onto the timeline and costs a minimum of three hundred and seventy-five dollars. That fee goes towards the review and the advertising that was recently updated to reflect the true cost of the advertising. Um, since most fences don't require permits, this leads to pretty uneven enforcement issues. And fences are typically installed with hand tools and have very minimal land disturbance. Um, we additionally see a need to codify existing policy for floodways and flood plains. Um, the state of Georgia, Sandy Springs, Brookhaven and Peachtree Corners, all exempt fences from stream buffer regulations, while Woodstock, Alpharetta and Roswell do not. So staff is proposing that we exempt fences from stream buffer regulations, except that fences cannot be located in the floodway and only wooden fences are allowed in the flood plain. This would stay consistent with the fact that we typically just don't allow any construction within the floodway. And the reason why only wooden fences would be allowed in the flood plain is that in event, in case of a major flood event, the water will just push the wooden panels out. Um, but that is not the case for something like metal fences where debris can collect pretty easily. Um, so that's the reason for those uh, conditions. We reviewed it with the city engineer as well as the public works department and found no negative impacts on water quality and that any land disturbance or soil erosion would be very minor. Um, at the most recent planning commission meeting, the planning commission um, moved to recommend approval unanimously. So I'm available for any questions that you all might have.
Okay, um, unless there's an objection, I will open the public hearing for this item. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposed change? We'll have ten minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak against this proposed change? We will have ten minutes. Seeing no comments, I close the public comment. And now it's time for questions or comments. Tom?
Whoops, sorry. There you go. Uh, thank you for the presentation. And just before I get into my questions or comments, I just want to say in general, I I I think this is a good idea. We have a lot of streams throughout the city that impact a lot of homeowners. Um, uh, obviously having a fence allows for privacy, for security, for containing kids and pets. So uh, so letting our residents be able to do that with the least amount of um, hurdles to clear, I think, is a good idea, especially since they end up getting approved anyway. Um, so um, uh, my question has to do with the restriction to wood. Uh, I know you explained it that the panels push out, um. But I can say in my experience, that's not necessarily true, um, especially if you have a well-constructed fence. Um, and I'll give an example. I actually rented a house a few years ago while I was doing a remodel of my own house. Uh, it had a wooden fence at the bottom of the driveway and we had a pretty good rain. It came down. It actually, the wooden fence, the water could not flow through it. So uh, the the water backed up and all it took was a little bit of pine drawn leaves to muck up the bottom of it. And it actually flooded the house. Um, so I know that we're not going to have houses or 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 uh, structures in the in the stream buffer. But the the point is that you'd need a uh, you know, class five rapids to knock those panels out in most cases, unless the fence was rotting and deteriorated. So I don't know that the in the intent of limiting it to wood um, is or is consistent with reality of of that type of situation. Um, it on the on the converse side, I would think that a chain link fence that, you know, vinyl coated to meet with code, which is probably ninety-five percent air, um, would allow water to flow through it more easily. And I do know that, of course, debris could dam it up. But I think in in a the typical events that we deal with in Dunwoody, it would probably allow for an easier flow of water. So I'm just, I'm just concerned that the intent isn't going to be consistent with the reality of this, the material. So um, I don't know i- if there's data to show that with the wooden fences versus other materials, but so I guess that's the question. Is there data? Or or was there a reason why the 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 vinyl chain link would not be allowed?
Yeah, so this was based on um, our city engineer's recommendation, based on his understanding of the intent behind the floodway and flood plain regulations. Um, and in his experience, the chain link fences do get sort of backed up with debris. Um, but I don't have specific data and so that's definitely something that I could look into for for the second read if you're interested.
I would, yeah, because I think the backup of debris would be if the if the fence wasn't properly maintained over time and hopefully that anyone that has a fence would be doing that. I think a single event, it would have to be a pretty catastrophic event to to dam up a a chain like fence, whereas a wooden fence, I think, would dam up pretty quickly. So I, yeah, I'd like a little more research into that, so we have a clearer understanding.
Anybody else? Joe?
For the define uh, a pervious ability in the fence as built. I mean, can we kind of look at that potentially, right?
Just I think when you bring it back, bring the engineer with you. All right, it's a first read, so just bring the engineer with you. And if you need a deferral, we can do that at the next meeting. Like if for some reason y'all have more questions, we're fine. Otherwise, I think we're all fine with this idea, right? I think we are all good with this. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And set agenda, does anyone have any questions or comments? Uh, okay.
Um, I had a question on the the change order for at the nature center. I didn't really understand it.
Please, Carl, say.
But Carl, I know you're stormwater and I know you're going to enlighten me and.
Yeah, so this. Not too close to the mic. Yeah, so this particular project is um, is the second of three uh, proposed projects in the um, nature center at Dunwoody Park. Um, it was to address the flooding issues down at the existing educational areas and where the kids are and some of the members of the nature center. So um, the proposal originally was for a permeable paving system and an underground detention facility. But the geotechnical assessment ended up finding that the water table in that area was a little too high. And it was a little too, um. The infiltration rates weren't optimal to have a permeable paper system. We would have had some potential clogging issues in that particular area. So what we had to do was just basically go with a redesign and go with a little bit simpler design. And the goal is to eliminate in the bigger storms, those buildings, those existing buildings from getting flooded by diverting the water into the existing channel on the south end of Palm. So that's the goal. Um, but we were going to try to get it done because, you know, um. I mean, for selfish purposes, we kind of wanted the nature center to kind of be our flagship um, park for, you know, teaching, you know, the public about stormwater management because there was so much um, old infrastructure there or non-existent infrastructure there. We're kind of reverse engineering that part to add the necessary stormwater management facilities there. So um, unfortunately, we had to punt on that, but the third project, of course, is the uh, boardwalk project at the the boardwalk wetness facility project, but there'll be more information on that in the future.
So the change order is just for the design?
Yes, just for the design.
So since we're, just out of curiosity, so since we're simplifying it, is it going to be cheaper to build?
Yes, significantly cheaper.
There you go. Well, there's a win. Anybody else for consent? Right, this is an action item.
Move to approve.
By John.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And also, Carl, I've gotten so many compliments. Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. And also Carl, I've gotten so many compliments on you in the last few days. Uh, the nature center folks had just high, high praise. But also you answered emails at like five o'clock on a Saturday morning. From neighbors concerned about flooding in the Georgetown area. That's way above and beyond. And we really appreciate it. And you have, you know, it's, it makes people nervous when we have these really heavy rains. And water reaches places it wasn't reaching before. And so I appreciate your ability to calm and to say, we're watching and here's how you can stay. Even just a little bit about how to get notified by the, I guess, the federal government when, or the state. I don't know who does.
US Geological.
Yeah, them.
Get text alerts.
Right, about when.
The stream gets a certain.
Right. So I appreciate your utter dedication to this position. We appreciate it. Thank you. Alright.
The next item on the agenda is item nine. It's a first read for the review and consideration of a text amendment. To amend regulations for entertainment districts. The ordinance reads as follow. An ordinance to amend chapter four alcoholic beverages of the city of Dunwoody. Code of ordinances to amend regulations for entertainment districts. Holly and Heart is presenting.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Uh, this is a text amendment to extend the existing perimeter center entertainment district. So it's one of two of our open container districts. Um, the owner of Park Place, it's the shopping center. Where the former allowance, like, like bakery was in there. Um, is uh, undergoing extensive renovations uh, for that property to. Let's bruise it up for, for his next life. And they've asked us to be included as part of the entertainment district. Um, the property owner Edens is here as well to, to answer any questions y'all may, y'all may have. What it would do is it would extend, and I have the map pulled up here. In yellow is the existing entertainment district and it would extend it uh, by the two red uh, parcels. One is the Park Place Shopping Center. The other one is the adjacent Bank of America building that's owned by the same entity. Will likely be included uh, in the future as part of, uh, as part of the development. And um, and then sort of associated pedestrian crossings to, to get there. And um, with that, I'm going to be able to answer any questions y'all may have.
Okay, so this is a different kind of ordinance change, so we don't have the whole public hearing. So uh, council can just go straight into questions if anybody has them. So I have a, a question, just a procedural question. So we, our ordinance is set up that any applicant has to come. It's a change in the ordinance, right?
Correct. We're exchanging the old map with the new map.
And it's not, there's no other way to do this, like.
No.
Okay, just asking. I'm all about efficiency. Um, and then for our friends at Eden's, if one of them wants to come talk a little bit about um. I, about their plans for the center, we, just so you know, so you can relax, these things. I can't speak for my colleagues, but generally they've been very easily passed. But I'm curious, because you have the courtyard inside where the restaurants all kind of face. Um, is your vision for people to be able to get a drink and walk around your courtyard? Um, you could, you have to answer in the microphone. I'm really sorry.
I'm letting you ask your question.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, so again, I'm Michael Sard from Sard and Left Attorneys, and that's a, that's a great question. Um, so yeah, that, the focal point of the property is that courtyard area where the restaurants are. Where we, uh, we feel like we're gonna be bringing in uh, new restaurants, building on the base of McKendrick's and Clips. Um, national, regional, local restaurateurs are interested to get the best in class here. Um, so yes, the focal point is that patio area, is that courtyard area. But uh, it did from time to time, there may be larger events that we have on property. Where we want to have the ability to have people carrying alcohol that they purchase on property in those spaces. So the focal point is that courtyard area.
Okay, do you envision ever like offering music, live music at the courtyard for all the restaurants? Is that, is there future programming coming? Somebody's standing up behind you.
Come on. I'll jump in on this, just because it's a little easier for me to answer. Uh, good evening, and thank you so much for having us here. Um, yes, the intent is for there to be significant programming within that courtyard area. We think that this entertainment district really sets the stage for enabling that cohesion and interaction across the tenancy. But the intent is to have lots of different sorts of activation, day and night. Some of the nighttime activations will certainly have a musical component. But we also envisioned uh, from a daytime perspective outside of this ordinance, there being opportunities for, you know, mom groups and. You know, outdoor fitness and things of that nature. So we think that the, the courtyard is a really special. Differentiating element uh, for this whole community. And the vision for this redevelopment is really investing in that courtyard. And all of the elements that would lend to the experiential um, vibe that we think is really a potential there.
Thank you. That sounds good. John, your question?
Yeah, why can, why do I need to drink at the bank, but I can't drink at the, at the jewelry store? Tell me what's going on at the bank, because I haven't been, uh.
It's on my account, you might want to. Uh, but uh, the idea is future development. And so, you know, here we are asking for this for the property now. And while we don't know exactly what will happen to the bank property in the future, might as well include that now. It'll be a subject to all the rules and regulations that go with entertainment districts.
I'm guessing then you don't own the jewelry store? The jewelry store is. Oh, that's a gas station?
Yeah, the gas station's excluded. It's not part of our property. That's the.
We don't want them.
That's the whole.
Alright, I'm just trying to figure it all thing. Alright, well, thank you. I look forward to drinking at the uh, bank reels.
It'll. Anybody else? Can this go on consent? Yes, okay, uh, cons. What? Oh, go ahead, Joe. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So um, when I look at this contiguous, I know it's gonna be, it's outside of your box officially, but. We show these connections over to perimeter mall. We show this access from Ashford Dunwoody implying that. Potentially, conceptually feasibility wise, that they could be walking as a pedestrian outside of a car. We all know that this is a car-centric development here. We don't see. I'd like to know what your plans are if you were to do any interior uh, internal pedestrian facilities. Would you be improving pedestrian access and the ability to walk without being in a motor vehicle space? From Ashford Dunwoody into your center of the, of the park place, from the nodes, from perimeter east, perimeter west, Rashford Dunwoody. Do you envision the ability to walk there without having to be in the same space as an automobile?
Thank you for the question. So it's really around, are there some offsite improvements planned or exterior changes to the connectivity points? Outside the center?
On your property to get into the.
In your parking lot, is what you're saying.
Just to increase, right, right.
Nestream friendly.
But it's in front of it.
I just thought, if somebody's staying at the Ravinia, they can walk over there easily if they wanted to, for example.
So the, the, the focus of the existing redevelopment plan that we're currently underway on from a construction perspective. Is really focused on the interior of the property as a first phase. And in that, we are focused on ensuring better pedestrian connectivity out to the parking field and within the site and within the court courtyard through the tenancy. I would suggest that there is a potential in the future, maybe with some subsequent redevelopment, to address some of those. Exterior areas, but at the moment, we are very much focused on getting the interior of the property right and upgrading tenancy today.
Well, I'm a bit disappointed. I'd like to be able to walk safely from perimeter east, for center west, Rashford Dunwoody into the central of your place. If we're starting from scratch or building new developments, that's what we ask new developers to do. So I'd like you to potentially reconsider. Obviously, we, we're not zoning or re-permitting yet. But if you could see to how you can help that, otherwise I'd like to ask staff where we're gonna have a contiguous. Uh, entertainment district, or we're just gonna break that down and not let people move off of that and go from Ashford Dunwoody to our perimeter mall.
Is that a question for staff?
Yeah, that would be a question for staff if they can see that, so.
Maybe put them, there is a crossing on the map to the mall. Right.
And uh, uh, Cosman, if you could please uh, re- repeat the question.
So if uh, there is not six, if, if you notice on the map that there's a connection. In the red and yellow to get across Ashford Dunwoody. So um. In the absence, if, if the applicant uh, doesn't, you know, I'm asking for better pedestrian in from the interior. If we have people that decide they want to carry open container from perimeter mall over at Park Place. That we have it uh, safe and convenient for people that are not in cars.
Yeah, and we, we will sort of, and then I don't wanna um, give, give away too much. But like um, the uh, park place people are considering uh, sort of additional sort of changes to the property. And as part of that, we'll push for uh, pedestrian connections. So that's, that's one of the priorities to get. Like a, a safe connection from Ashford Dunwoody to the front door and they're aware of that. I mean, they, that's, they want to open up the property. And their design team is uh, cognizant about that.
So back, is this okay for consent? Yes, okay, thank you. Oh. Um, contract. Uh, Brent Walker for the parks and right-of-way maintenance.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the item I have for y'all tonight is a discussion on the uh, contract award for our grounds maintenance and right-of-way contract. Uh, we are at the end of a four-year contract with Triscapes. Um, they've done a, a good job with us, are good partners with the city. Uh, so we solicited a RFP. We received five responses. The scores and the cost are in your memo. Uh, after going through the scoring process individually, we convened as a committee, combined our scores, uh, send the bottom chart. And we feel that Triscapes uh, would be a good partner to continue with. Um, the next term would be a three-year contract with two one-year uh, renewal options. And the prices for each year are in your memo as well. Uh, so with that, I will open it up to any questions y'all may have.
I have questions, but I'll let someone else go first. Rob.
I was just wondering, in the scoring, could, could you just spend a minute and maybe go through kind of the factors and the waiting you use to develop the scores?
Sure. Um, mostly it's um, response to the scope of work, how they're gonna be able to do the thing we've asked them to do. Obviously, Triscapes has been here for a while, so they kind of understand the process a little bit more. Um, some of it is based on experience, a lower amount of the point percentages is based on experience. How they worked in this type of field, have they worked uh, government jobs, uh, municipal work or any other county agencies? Um, price is not as scored as high as ability and the mechanism. And I can bring those percentages with me next time. I unfortunately didn't bring the score sheet, but I'll be happy to bring that the next time. But it's primarily based on experience and the response to how they're going to, to activate their staff and, and do the work.
Any else? Yes, just reading through the contractor is interesting. They clean up prior to the parade of Fourth of July, but not after?
Well, both, actually.
It doesn't say after.
So they do though, because it's part of our right-of-way um, route. So it's part of their daily, or not daily task, but weekly task to do that area of right-of-way anyway. But that specifically, the cleanup prior to the parade is extra than what is normally tasked for. They go out and they play below all the curbing out, make sure it's very nice for the parade.
Yeah, okay, I thought maybe we just don't generate much trash, so that was nice.
That's it. That's exactly what.
Yeah, so um. They're gonna have to do all these grass strips. Do you have any plan to make them less grassy? Just like a pedestrian between, like we're in front of the nature center is plantings that don't have to be maintained.
Yes, so um, that's one of the conversations that Michael Smith and I have for any new projects that are coming online too. Is to make sure that we have a kind of a planting palette that is easy to maintain. And is it too exotic or difficult to, for our guys to know what they need to cut down and what not to, what to know, what not to. So that's part of the ongoing process between the crews and my staff and, and Michael Smith's staff that are designing those right-of-way areas.
And they really, they clean the restrooms, all the restrooms twice a day. That's very impressive. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you. John.
Thank you, Brent. I've gone through this. I see about the routine right-of-way maintenance. You got the mowing, you got the trimming, the doctor spots and all other right-of-way. Tell me, what are you gonna be doing, if at all, on anything regarding bus shelters?
Um, that's a good question. I wish Michael was here. That's more of his side of the contract. Um, they have a standard routine maintenance of just making sure everything is picked up. We don't have the garbage contract for uh, the bus stations that's picked up on Morna.
Well, that bus station or bus shelter contract might no longer be in existence. Garbage might be there. If you're maintaining the right-of-way and the bus shelter is there, is there a way for you then to pick up the garbage? If you haven't done so in the past, that might be a task of maintenance that might be growing.
That, you know, that wouldn't possibly submit a change order uh, for that scope of work. If it's something that's above and beyond staff-wise or equipment-wise, say a truck, it may have to be added to the contract at a later date.
I just wasn't sure if it was mentioned in here. I just see it as right-of-way maintenance and I didn't know if that was including that or not.
It's primary just mowing and keeping limbs cut back, sidewalks available, you know, open and clean.
Alright, thank you.
Joe.
Yeah, Brent, I really, um, you really look at the, we've taken it up a notch the last few years on the right-of-way maintenance out there on the streets. And you see them out there and it's like, wow, this is like somebody's private HOA and they're keeping these nice and clean and prune and trimmed. And it looks really, really nice. So I do thank the crew for doing that. It really, really makes it pleasing to the eye. Um, you know, I noticed up, up and below, I remember years ago when we do in the green community certification back on the sustainability committee. You know, we talked about the herbicides, pesticides and so on. And you allude to this idea about best practices and so on. I know we only have so many people. And, you know, I'm a lymphoma survivor and you read about Roundup, right? Um, but I'd like to know where, uh, we can just kind of maybe take it up a notch or two about the herbicides and pesticides. Um, and if they could do more organics type treatments, I, I'd like to really take that up. I'd like to talk the talk, walk the walk. Uh, look at organic options and uh, electric versus the gas-powered leaf blowers. Because we know all the, the exhaust that comes out of those things. So um, I'd like to have some kind of conversation, see what we could, could consider with these guys.
Yeah, we can certainly do that move forward in the contract. And um, we are starting to look at some natural resource management plans of how to improve all of those things, so we can certainly have that conversation.
So, um, I have a couple of questions. One is that. How are, it done, it's not necessarily rate to trust rate, should, how are, is your department managing? Park maintenance in terms of trash cans, is it, who goes behind and make sure things are happening?
So. The, the problem we run into sometimes is that during the week, especially, we have our parks crew are here from around seven AM to three thirty. Uh, of course, our busiest times come in after that. Uh, so what we try to do is hit it, the well-used parks early the next morning. So any trash that comes into the parks from that, say four o'clock to nine o'clock is picked up as early as possible. So that's not sitting there the next day. Um, going forward, we, we want to have more weekend and night staff to help kind of monitor that. And hit some things as need be. We have a on-call with Triscapes. We have a lot of guys that are on this crew that live in the city. So as comments come in or we hear about it, we dispatch them that night to go out and take care of things.
So a couple of years ago, we added positions to your department that were part-time, seasonal and in the evenings and weekends. Did those positions get filled?
They are often home. As you can imagine, it's difficult to keep part-time staff now. And so we've had few come and go, depending on what we can pay with the salaries we have. But yes, we've had some.
Okay. So we had a boatload of negative comments about one of our parks the other day. Um, what proactively are we doing to ensure? The upkeep, upkeep of that park?
Sure. So we met with our vendor, a very candid conversation about that specific park. We've uh, increased our garbage pickup to two different times a day now. So they are going first thing in the morning. And again, at the very end of the day, to make sure that it's all clean and cleared uh, for anything that happens in between their hours are here. So typically, if we do a garbage run in a less busy area, once a day is plenty.
Mm-hmm.
But that one specifically, we doubled our pickup times to make sure that it is staying clean.
Okay, so given that we're in contract negotiation time right now, is it possible? I'm gonna define the problem and let y'all figure out how to um, fix it, Eric. Is it possible to have more official presence at our parks in the early evening till dark? At parks where we know that they're highly used at that time of day. I'm not gonna tell you how to solve it, but you can, if you need to renegotiate the contract before you bring it back to us.
Okay.
And then my second question is really for Eric or Michael Smith, who may have left. And then my second question is really for Eric or Michael Smith, who may have left. Um, it's about potholes and Triscate's ability or inability to address them temporarily. Where are we with that?
You know anything additional on that? Well, after talking to Michael Smith about it, you know, we did have an issue at one point with the vendor's ability to get asphalt in a timely fashion in the quantities they needed it for the potholes. But since that, I think it was a temporary
Okay.
issue and that was since resolved.
Thought it was a skill set. Just find out before we vote on this, please. Thank you. Thank you. Alright, anybody else? Alright, we'll see you in a few weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Public comment? Anybody have cards? Um, alright, city manager comments?
No additional comments, Mayor, and we do not need an executive session tonight.
Council comments? Anybody have anything? Nope, thank you. Uh, no executive session, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move by Rob.
Second.
Second by Stacy. All in favor, say aye. I, we stand adjourned. Thank you all.